Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to bring call to order the June 15th meeting of the Waukegan City Council Meeting, also the night that the Blackhawks will take the Stanley Cup. So we're going to be very brief and hold on your horses because this is going to go quick. Rule call please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Here.
Alderman Villalobos.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another city council meeting. We thank you tonight that our mayor and all those are gathered here to conduct the business of the city. We ask that you give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to do the best for our city. In the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
For the allegiance of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. I inadvertently left some items off the Judiciary Committee for tonight, so I'm calling for a special city council meeting on Wednesday, the 17th at 5:00 PM. We'll address four items on that agenda. I'm sorry, Alderman, it was my fault and I'll take credit for not putting that on the agenda. Audience time.
Good evening. My name's Dan Schaefer. I live at 3319 Judy Lane in Park City, and I'm talking in response to the Red and Black Cab Company whom I work for. Since we started the business a year ago, we've grown immensely and we need more cabs on the road to do our business, and I was wondering if we could maybe increase the number of cabs within the company to either five, if possible, or 10 would be really good. And also, the years of the cab, we got them increased from eight to 10 years, and we were wondering if we could get them increased to maybe even 15 years. Or they had comments, the last time I did this, they didn't see any reason to have a year at all on the thing, but I think it should be like 15 years at the very, very most for a cab to be on the road. My cabs stay on the road for two years and I get rid of them, I get new cabs. But with the economy the way it is, it's harder and harder to get new cabs, you know, buy new cabs and put them on the road and service to people like we'd like to.
Mr. Schaefer, all you have to do for that is contact Alderman Tempest Public Safety Committee, and he can start that through and it'll work itself through that committee and through traffic, and at that point we'll determine whether or not we're prepared to do that for you.
Okay.
Okay.
I had a few more things. I talked to a few of the people up here. Washington Street, eastbound at Genesee Street, it's two lanes going eastbound. When you cross Genesee Street, it turns into one, it merges into one, and there's a constant, I see it every day, I mean, I'm parked right there in that area, I work downtown, and I see two people trying to race to get to that one lane, there's going to be a major accident there, and you got a bus sitting right there next to the bank, and somebody, there's going to be somebody that's going to get killed walking across there, or they're going to kill each other trying to race across the road. My possible solution would be either put a left lane on there, turn lane in there, or a right turn lane, and have, you know, either one of them have a one-way going straight, you know, maybe a left turn straight or a right turn straight, I don't know. However, the safety committee might want to do something like that. And the bus is sitting on Sheridan Road, they sit there for five or 10 minutes at a time, and they got a double yellow line there, and my driving instructor here, when I was in high school, said you cannot pass a vehicle with a double yellow line, and people are going to get, somebody's going to get killed doing that.
Sir, that's three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can talk to...
I'll meet with you too.
Talk to Chief of Police as well.
I did, I just...
Okay, thank you, sir. Jane Ferry. Speed talk, Jane.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you. My name's Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. The 16th Annual Relay for Life Greater Waukegan Far North Shore is this Saturday, June 20th, at beautiful Beavieir Park. You can join hundreds of cancer survivors, caregivers, family, and friends to celebrate the lives of cancer survivors, remember those who have lost their battles, and fight back against this disease that takes so much from so many. The event starts at 3:30 with a survivor caregiver celebration and a general kickoff at 5:00 PM. The general kickoff will also include an award for the high school students who have gone through pinkout in trying to fight cancer and raise cancer awareness. And it will also include survivor, two-time survivor speaker Cheryl Lynn Hendrickson, who will share her inspirational story. Entertainment is provided by DJ-at-Large Christopher Thielen. There will be much fun going on, including a live auction that will have a 2014-2015 signed Bulls basketball, Taste of Waukegan baskets, and AC/DC concert tickets, along with a number of other things. The event is open to the public and all are welcome. For more information, contact Sarah at American Cancer Society, 847-317-0025, or relayforlife.org/waukeganil. With one in two men and one in three women experiencing cancer in their lifetime, we all know somebody who is a survivor or has lost their battle, so I hope to see all of you out there. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Jane. John Belmonte.
Thank you. I was here April 20th, and I inquired about the police department policy of confiscating firearms when no crime has been committed, and you, Mayor, told me that Corporation Council Steve Martin was looking into it. Well, what are your, what's your answer, Mr. Martin? Did you check it up?
I'll let the Corporation handle it. We have dealt with one of those situations already. Steve is still in the process of getting the language, so, Steve, go ahead.
We've got one case in court right now we're dealing with. I've read the litigation, I've checked with other policies throughout the state and other communities. I'm in the process of formulating a policy that adheres to all compliant federal, state, and local ordinances, which we intend to do. We always intend to protect the spirit of the law, and we will do so.
So is the policy still continuing now?
I don't understand what policy you're asking me, sir.
Confiscation of firearms when no one's been...
We don't confiscate firearms in the city of Waukegan.
When no one's been charged. No one's been charged, no crimes alleged have been committed.
Can I speak, sir?
Sure.
We do not confiscate weapons from people. We take weapons into custody for safekeeping and/or when they are involved in a crime. Those are the two instances we take firearms into possession of the Waukegan Police Department.
Well, that dog was shot. It was shot legally, and the gun was sent to the crime lab.
I'm not going to argue any particular cases with you.
Okay.
I'm simply stating to you that we are taking in advisement, and we're in compliance, and we should remain in compliance with the laws.
Yeah, it's 56 days since I was here. And my second concern is Willow Avenue, which originally was constructed for emergency access to my subdivision, Drobinck subdivision, the corner of that is 10th and Dougdale, and making it a one-way street, I think is a bad idea. It could cut down on response time. Now, I realize we have a lot of people using it as a shortcut through the subdivision to get to 10th Street, but in the meantime, we've also got emergency vehicles in and out, and there's the original 10th and 11th.
They can go the wrong way on a one-way street. They're allowed to go the wrong way on a one-way street with emergency equipment on.
Yeah, you know, there's a hill there too, and you ought to be coming up over the top of that hill when somebody else is on the other side.
I've done it more than once.
It's an interesting situation to leave that hill there. I just assume you leave it a two-way street, and then you got the emergency access, nobody's risking their life to get there in a hurry, and that's when seconds count, you know, whatever it might be. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Chris Blanks.
Brother Blanks, 409 Oak Street, Waukegan. And, but what I know, it might sound a little bit repetitive, this issue of body cameras, but I want to share a little something with you. Round Lake Park authorized body cams for police. As part of the 2015-2016 budget, the village board on Tuesday unanimously voted police chief to spend up to $60,000 for a video system for seven frontline squad cars and body cameras for 13 officers. And I applaud Round Lake Park for taking the lead on that. I know body cameras, like anything, has its pros and it has its cons. But in this case, I think it has more pros than cons, because when we're looking at the issue and the things that are going on around the nation, I think body cameras, if they are implemented and they have the right type of legislation in place with strong penalties, that in the event officers decide to turn the cameras off, that there should be some strong course penalties for turning the camera off, especially if in the event something happened where excessive force or deadly force has taken place. I would also suggest, considering how much money the city has paid out over the years in lawsuits because of deadly force and excessive force, that perhaps we might want to consider when we are hiring our officers, perhaps we should consider making sure that it is a qualification or a requirement that they have their own liability insurance. Let's take the burden off the taxpayers. Whenever these officers commit an offense and it is found to be an unjustifiable homicide, they should pay the price, not the taxpayers. So maybe we should consider when we are hiring these officers, maybe we should think about making it a requirement that they have their own liability insurance and take that off the citizens, and when they have to pay, I think they'll think twice before committing such an act. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Blanks. Motion to approve regular minutes of June 1st, 2015. Motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations, resolutions, presentation, appointments. Item A, resolution on the passing of Kenneth Larson. Marki, would you please read that? Is there anyone here from the Larson family? Go ahead, Marki, read it.
Whereas Kenneth W. Larson passed away on April 19th, 2015, and whereas Kenneth W. Larson was born on January 17th, 1937, in Waukegan, and whereas Kenneth Larson served his country as a member, excuse me, of the United States Army Reserve, and whereas Kenneth Larson attended the Illinois Institute of Technology, and whereas Kenneth Larson was the owner and operator of Larson Marine Service, working side by side with four generations of family for over 50 years, and whereas Kenneth Larson was the member of the First United Methodist Church, he was also a lifetime member in Pascua Commodore of the Waukegan Yacht Club, and served as Waukegan Harbor Master for 25 years, and whereas Kenneth Larson was an avid traveler and boater, he also enjoyed his winters in Florida with his family and friends. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Motley and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois, that we, along with his family and friends, mourn the passing of Kenneth W. Larson. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to the family of Kenneth Larson as an expression of our sympathy, dated this June 15th of 2015.
Motion to accept the resolution by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Seager. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item B, resolution, retirement of Mary Ann Dutcher. Mary Ann, I want you to know that two Aldermen fought over who's going to read the resolution and who's going to make the motion. So the motions by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Moiseo, please read the resolution.
Thank you, Your Honor. Resolution 15-R-47. Whereas Mary Ann Dutcher came to Saint Anastasia in 1973 and was hired to start a kindergarten class, and whereas Mary Ann Dutcher had a gift for making new families feel like welcome members of the Saint Anastasia community, and whereas her love for the students and families was reflected by her dedication and commitment to her teaching, and whereas the kindergarten classroom immediately became known as an exciting and fun learning environment, enabling her young and often first-time students an opportunity to flourish, and whereas Mary Ann Dutcher served as assistant principal for many years, and also served on a multitude of schools, as well as parish committees, and whereas her influence can be seen in our school, parish, and community at large, her life's mission of loving, caring, and educating has positively impacted all those whose lives she has touched. Now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Motley and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby recognize the love and dedication that Mary Ann Dutcher provided to the Saint Anastasia community for 41 years of selfless service. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented to Mary Ann Dutcher, dated this June 15th, 2015.
All those in favor of the resolution? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
(applause)
I did not teach.[995.00][995.00](laughter)
Oh, my son! Oh! Hey, Dutch. I'd like the public to thank you for getting my son off. Wonderful. I'm just glad you're here. My son was Dutch's. Pat. Pat. You come over too, man. Take a photo with your wife. Yes. Come on up, Pat. Come on, man, up here. One up, Pat. I'd also like the public to thank you all through my daughters and fellow educators. It's so important that you get off to a great start, and man, you get off to a great start with Mary Ann Dutcher. And I just want to say for taste, I'm not sending my hand here.
I will say this. My daughter Ashley became a teacher because of Miss Dutcher, so that's something you should be very proud of. She really, she loves you dearly. Next is Ernie Peterson Plumbing, 50th anniversary. Marki, please read that.
Resolution 15-R-49. Whereas Ernie Peterson Plumbing, Inc. of Waukegan will be celebrating its 50th year in business this year. Ernie began the business in 1965, and it was a family affair from the beginning. And whereas after moving to Waukegan in 1936, he joined the Navy and served in World War II. Returning to Waukegan after the war, he worked for many years with his older brother, John. And whereas Ernie Peterson Plumbing was a small brick building sandwiched between homes on Grand Avenue just east of Buttrick Street, within a few years, he purchased a much larger building on Sheridan Road and McKinley Avenue on the south side of Waukegan, where the business remained until the mid 1980s. And whereas the company has been at its current location at 2421 Delaney Road in Waukegan since 2002. And whereas in 1989, Ernie passed away suddenly at the age of 72, which was a shock to the community and his family. His sons Glenn and Ron were just 26 and 24 years old when they took over the business. Ernie taught his boys to stay true to their customers. Ernie used to say, "No job is too big or too small." And whereas Ernie Peterson Plumbing, Inc. has been blessed with many longtime loyal customers, including most of the area school districts and the city of Waukegan. The business has employed over 200 people over the years. Now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Motley and members of the city council of the city of Waukegan, acknowledge 50th anniversary of Ernie Peterson Plumbing, Inc., and their dedication to this community. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, will be presented to the president, Ron Peterson, of Ernie Peterson Plumbing, Inc., dated this June 15th of 2015.
Is Mr. Peterson here? Anyone from the family? If not, we'll give that to that family. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsome. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion passed. Item D, reappointment of Claudia Freeman, Jackie Herrera-Guion. Did we do Eric already, Richard? We did Eric last month, right? So a reappointment of two people to the Waukegan Public Library Board. Motion by Alderman Villalobos, second by Alderman Taylor. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next is the Economic Development Committee. Alderman Valco, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The committee met this evening, and we had one item on the agenda. The committee voted to recommend and authorize the proper city officials to purchase the property commonly known as 200/300 Seahorse Drive, Waukegan, Illinois, 60085, from Knight Owl Holdings LLC for the sum of $1. The PIN number is 08-22-100-062. And for those out in the audience and at home, what this is, is these, Knight Owl Holdings purchased the property, it's the old 200 Seahorse Drive, they're scrapping it. When they get done with it, we will buy it from them for $1, and I so move, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Rule call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
No.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
That's it, Your Honor. Thank you. Public Works Committee, Alderman Newsome, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Public Works met this evening at 6:00 PM, have five items. Item A, the Public Works Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials draft specifications and advertise for bids for the control valve for the Beech Nut Booster Station, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed.
Item B, Public Works Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials draft specifications and advertise for bids for the storm sewer repairs on Buttrick Street from Brookside to the ravine at Tamara Court, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item C, the Public Works Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials draft specifications and advertise for bids for water main replacement in various parts of the city, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Item D, the Public Works Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials draft an ordinance making Willow Road from 7th Street North to Belvedere Road a one-way northbound only street, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Rule call, please, I'm sorry, all's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Eyes have it.
Item E, the Public Works Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials adopt a resolution to reduce the letter of credit for the Waukegan Delaney Industrial LLC. The final acceptance of Waukegan Delaney LLC is recommended, and I so move.
Motion by Alderman Newsome, second by Alderman Moiseo. Rule call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
That is all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Special... Your Honor, could you be sure on item D that my vote would be no also?
Mine was no also.
And Taylor. Taylor and Tempest.
No.
Three.
And Cunningham.
And Cunningham.
And Cunningham?
No.
No? Yes.
You voted yes or no?
No. So it's three no's?
Three no's.
Still passes, but it's...
Yeah, still passes.
Okay, fine. Special Public Safety Committee, Alderman Tempest, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have two items on the agenda. One is to, my motion would be to, the Public Safety Committee recommends and I so move that the proper city officials be authorized to cancel an award made to Wright Motors for three Ford Explorers, and purchase the three vehicles from Monroe Brothers at a unit price of $27,880 for a total price of $83,640. Funding for this purchase would be from the Federal Drug Asset Forfeiture Fund, line item 296-629-626493, and I would so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Rule call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
And item B, Your Honor, authorize the proper city officials to contribute $5,000 to the Lake County Crime Stoppers, pull office box 459, Mundaline, Illinois, 60060-0459. The contribution will be paid with federal asset forfeiture funds used in line item 296-629624438. Now I so move.
Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsome. Rule call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
There is no old business, there are no reports or communications. New business. Item A, approval of payroll, a regular dated June 12, 2015, in the amount of $1,385,125.72. Final payout, $536.88. Holiday vacation payout, $2,957.05. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Rule call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated June 15, 2015, in the amount of $2,736,403.70. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Cunningham. Rule call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Item C, approval of block parties. A motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Seager. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Ordinance is resolution. Item A, resolution authorizing the sale of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, specifically 2725 Dana Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois, 60087. Purchase price is $135,000. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Rule call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Item B, resolution authorizing the sale of property by the City of Waukegan pursuant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, specifically 648 Lennox Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. Purchase price is $54,000. Motion by Alderman Cunningham, second by Alderman Villalobos. Rule call, please.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Villalobos.
Aye.
Alderman Newsome.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman's time. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Moiseo.
Pass.
Alderman Villalobos.
Two things. Number one, I went to a vouchers, a debate last week, Wednesday, at Most Plus Trinity's gymnasium regarding the debate about voucher system and education for Waukegan. To something to bring to light, there was translation that was done for that, and the translation was not accurate, and that can really lead to some misinformation regarding the people that are involved in this, the people that live here. So this is super important. If a voucher system does come to Waukegan, it can really change how our education system in Waukegan works. So the idea that there are people being misled in this sense, this settles me, it makes me uncomfortable. So I encourage people to try to get more information about what's going on about our education here in Waukegan, and figure out, I don't know, so they can make their own choices, and so that's the first thing. Better news, the Waukegan Public Library just opened up their new main floor, and it is amazing. I encourage everyone to go and check out this new facelift that the library got. It's open, it's inviting, it's modern, it's, use the word again, it's amazing. So please go see the Waukegan Public Library. If you've been there a long time, you will be wowed. Thank you.
Alderman Newsome.
Pass.
Alderman Tempest.
Pass.
Alderman Valco.
No comment this evening.
Alderman Taylor.
Pass.
Alderman Cunningham.
Pass.
Alderman Seager.
Pass.
Motion to adjourn. Second by Alderman Valco. All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Hawks win.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman's time. Madam Clerk?
Alderman Moisio.
Pass.